Make sure we were all. Good evening, this is Terry Lineback, Chairperson of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Board of Directors, calling this regular meeting on February 16, 2022 to order at 6:31 PM. Thank you for joining us on Zoom this evening. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for the public. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment on items as they were heard. We will be following some procedures to help keep the meeting running smoothly. For all participants, please mute your microphone or phone when you are not speaking. You may have to unmute your own microphone in order to speak. We will follow the order of the posted agenda. Each item will follow the same process. First, the clerk will announce the items, then staff will present. The chair will then ask the clerk if there is any public comment. The chair will ask each board member in the same order for their comments or questions. Director Sloan, Director Danzel, Secretary Yearwood, Vice Chair Reyes, and myself. So if the clerk would please call the roll.
Yes, we received advanced notification that Vice Chair Reyes would be absent this evening. Director Sloan?
Here.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Secretary Yearwood?
Here.
And Chair Lineback?
Here. At this time, I'd like to announce the results of the closed session that we had at 5:30. There was no reportable action taken during that closed session. So now we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and for the pledge, we ask that only the person leading have their microphone on.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Dawn Hall to lead us in the pledge this evening. And she's our new Cordova Recreation and Parks Foundation Board Member. And then following the pledge, General Manager Larkin will provide an introduction. So go ahead, Dawn.
Okay, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which it stands, sorry, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Why am I forgetting it?
And to the Republic.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Didn't make you, want to make you so nervous, Dawn, but you did a good job. Thank you. So I now have the honor of introducing our newest CRPF Board Member. So Dawn, a little bio for her, Dawn has the honor of working as the Director of Operations for Visit Rancher Cordova, a tourism bureau founded in 2010. She has been working with this organization for over six years as their bookkeeper, but is now excited to be a full-time member of their team. Prior to that, Dawn, as you may know, worked for the Rancher Cordova Chamber of Commerce for over 14 years as their Operations Director. In a short time, she learned what an incredible community Rancher Cordova is. She currently serves as the Treasurer of Leadership Rancher Cordova and has served as their Program Administrator for over 10 years with over 250 graduates, some of which are here on our meeting tonight, including me. Dawn has over 30 years of bookkeeping and operations experience, starting with her career as an accounting liaison for the Southland Corporation in Fresno, California. She was responsible for producing financials for over 57 elevens, go slurpee, stores throughout San Joaquin Valley. Southland Corporation moved their Fresno Administrative Operations to Rancher Cordova in 1994 and soon closed that location in 1996. It was then that she began working for the local trucking company as her Office Manager from 1996 to 2005. Prior to her work for the Chamber of Commerce, she was the Office Manager for Techline Studio. At that time, one of the Techline owners happened to be the Board Chair of the Rancher Cordova Chamber of Commerce. One meeting later, and the rest was history. Dawn enjoys music, crocheting, hiking, camping, and just spending time with friends and family. She has a wonderful husband of 33 years, two children, one granddaughter, two dogs, one cat, three turtles, a pond full of fish, and a gecko. Her heart is most content when she can help others. It was Dawn who said it is an extreme pleasure to be a part of the Cordova Recreation and Parks Foundation Board of Directors. Together, we will do great things. We are absolutely thrilled that Dawn is joining us on the Foundation Board and welcome. And we're excited to see the leadership you provide on that board. So welcome. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. Welcome.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, so now we are going to move on to Board Disclosures on Action Items, and we will start with Director Sloan.
I have nothing to report.
Director Danzel?
None.
Secretary Yearwood?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. So at this point, it's time for comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I just wanted to note for all those members of the public that are present here, if you would like to comment on items, you may raise your hand in the Zoom or send a request to me in the chat. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. And to my knowledge, at this time, we have one request for general public comment. So I'd like to welcome Dane Wadley from CSDA. Hi, Dane.
Hi Danielle. Good evening, Board Members, Staff, Community. Nice to see everyone tonight. Just wanted to come on real briefly, again, Field Coordinator with California Special District Association for Sacramento County, and just congratulate the district on receiving some of the COVID fiscal relief funds that made available from the state through their program, through the state budget. You know, one of the things that I know you guys are aware of is that the program was kind of geared towards parks and recreation districts, who of course were so impacted by the, by the COVID, you know, the COVID pandemic with revenue losses and new expenses, et cetera. And so to see it go out to you and other park districts in Sacramento County is, is something that we really appreciate and we're glad to see at CSDA. And so just want to congratulate you, and then just also to thank you for all of your advocacy work, because as you know, this has been CSDA's primary advocacy priority for the past two years, and it all came to fruition through a team effort with which you guys were certainly a part of in terms of, you know, making the phone calls and writing the letters that it took to help us build our coalition with your local legislators on board to get that funding in the state budget, and then of course also to, you know, influence the Governor's Office and ultimately get it out and to the districts. And of course, the rest is history. So thank you so much for everything that you guys continually do for us. Congratulations again. Look forward to working with you, of course, on future issues this year and going forward. So I'll go ahead and stop there. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dane. We appreciate your advocacy for us. Okay, so at this time, we move on to the Consent Calendar.
Okay, I do not see any other requests for a general public comment. So the Consent Calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The Chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the Consent Calendar. And this evening, we have six items for your consideration.
Okay, if there are any items, does anyone wish to pull any items from the Consent Calendar? I'll start with Director Sloan.
None for me.
Director Danzel?
No, ma'am.
Secretary Yearwood?
No.
And I have none. So in that case, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the Board approves Consent Calendar items C1 through C6.
I'll second that motion. Director Sloan?
We have a motion by Secretary Yearwood and a second by Director Sloan. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay, so at this point, we move on to our presentations.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation of Certificate of Recognition to Greg Wright for 17 years of dedicated service to the Cordova Recreation and Park District upon the occasion of his retirement. And I'll turn it over to Recreation Supervisor to Heather Schelsky to do the presentation.
Thank you. So we are here to honor the 17 years of Greg and working at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center. Greg has been the heart and soul of the center for almost two decades. I'm happy to say I got to work with him for almost half of that time. So it's been a great honor. His dedication to the center has shown in his daily work routine. He takes pride in keeping the inside and outside of the center neat and orderly. He interacted with all the members and treated them as family as they did with him. His customer service went way above and beyond. Greg made sure that tables, chairs, rooms were set up for individual likings. He knew the needs of every participant and made sure that they met, met their needs on a daily basis. His care and compassion for the seniors showed and made him thrive at his job. Greg was a people person and enjoyed his position with the district. He is going to be very missed, but we're happy for his retirement and for him to move on. And that's all I have. I hope he's still on here. I saw him on here.
Is Greg here? Would Greg like to speak?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you very much. This is an honor. I enjoyed my time at the senior center and I'm going to miss it.
Maybe you'll come back and play Santa for us again, Greg, though. If I can twist your arm.
I can do that.
I actually have a personal memory of Greg because my husband and I went on one of the senior trips to the Hearst Mansion, and Greg was the staff person who took care of us on that trip, and he was fabulous. So thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And Greg, the icing on the cake is that the Rams won the Super Bowl, right?
That's right.
Well, congratulations and enjoy your next endeavor, whatever it's going to be.
Thank you.
Would any other Director like to speak? Okay, okay. Thank you, Greg, very much for your 17 years of service. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
So now we move along to Committee Reports, and seeing as no committee met in the past month, we'll pass to Item F, Public Hearings.
Thank you. Item F1 is Public Hearing Number Three, to receive public input on the composition of voting districts and review draft maps for a potential transition from at-large to by-district elections for the Board of Directors pursuant to the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:45 PM.
Thank you. As we have several members of the public joining us this time, I just want to point out a couple of items within the staff report to help with the historical perspective on this process. I wanted to note that the draft maps associated with this item were published for the public on February 8, 2022. I wanted to note that the district is required to hold five public hearings prior to adoption of any resolution converting from election systems. The first two public hearings were held on January 19th and January 24th. And just to note that now the district is required to hold two public hearings within a 45-day period. A summary of this process and potential timeline is available at www.crpd.com/districting. And I also wanted to point out, as we get further along in the discussion, that in terms of sequence of voting districts, the Board has full discretion in the determination of which districts are up for election and when. So moving on, I would like to introduce our consultants, Eddie and Fabian, to lead us in the presentation. So I will start. Is it Fabian? Are you going to lead?
Yeah, I'm gonna, Eddie actually has a class tonight, so I'm going to be taking over from tonight. But shouldn't be any issues. So I'm going to be presenting the draft maps and getting some, hopefully some input from the Board about them and talking about our next steps. So before I show them, I'm going to share my screen in just a moment. I just want to preface this by starting with the last meeting we had. We kind of went over some basic ideas of communities that you thought might want to be together, or, you know, we hadn't really looked at maps yet. So what we're going to show you today is we're going to show you four draft maps that we are addition to the insights have made, as well as one public submission that I assisted a member of the public with creating. And I'm going to show you all of them. I can give you the information on each of them, the overall deviations, population equality, that kind of stuff. But I want to stress the fact, two points specifically. One, the, these lines, this doesn't mean you have to accept one of these. I'm not going to show you five maps and you have to pick one. These are a starting point. These are for you to kind of look at, get an idea and say, okay, you know, we hate draft one, let's get rid of it. But draft two, all we need to do is move these lines and we like it, or what have you. You're not going to hurt anybody's feelings, trust me. We don't, we don't take personal ownership and like, oh, you can't change my map. So we really do want your courage as well, your input and your feedback on these maps when you're looking at them, you know, whether it's good, bad, or whatever. Second, we, this is going from a new dish, new, from a at-large to districting. And so when we do that, we have to enumerate, and as Danielle had mentioned just a moment ago, the Board has control over that enumeration, what district is which number. And it's really important to know that what we've put on here is somewhat arbitrary for how we've numbered things. We just numbered them in a way that you can see, okay, that is your one, that is your two. We kept the colors. All the ones are always red, all the fours are always yellow. It's just for consistency for looking at, but the Board ultimately has a decision on what the numbering will be and what districts will go up for those elections, right? So that's going to be up to the Board. I don't want you to think that I'm numbering one, you know, in the Anatolia area, and that's always got to be number one. Doesn't really matter. It's really what the Board wants. Having said all that, any questions up before I jump into the maps? Wonderful. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. And can I just get a nod from any of the Board saying they can see my screen? Wonderful. So this is, like I said, this is a Google map that we have put together for you. The link should be available for both the public and for yourselves. You can look at it, you can zoom in on it. If you want to see something in particular, you can just zoom right in and look at the street names. If you also want down the left-hand corner, you can turn on the satellite view, which will allow you to see more of the actual landmark areas. If you want to know where Tucsonic Audio is, you'll be able to see it when you turn on the satellite. I'm going to leave it off just while we're looking at this to make it a little easier to see, though. The colorings, all the colorings refer to the different district. If you click on a district, the information about, it will come up on the side, so you can see the information about it. Okay? This is just, you know, so you can see, okay, this is the population, this is deviation, CBAP and these types of things. When we're, when we're creating these maps, we get all this information with the adjusted population. Just FYI, again, we haven't talked about them a bit. That adjusted population, it does include the prison populations, which have been adjusted back into your area. So it might be slightly higher than what census indicated originally, just because of using adjusted population. And then last, I wanted to mention that in these maps, I'm going to show you a few different versions. In these maps, we kind of, each map has its own type of theme that we went with trying to draw something. So we said, okay, let's try to draw something that is this, let's try to draw something that is this. And that's where we kind of get these iterations from. Like I said, by no means are they set in stone. Please just give us any feedback you'd like. So I'll start with draft one. This is draft one. As you can see, we have it set up in a way that we're trying to keep a lot of the areas whole that have been identified within the community of the district, the overall district. The Anatolia area, you can see we keep that whole, we keep the Rosemont area whole. La Riviera is whole, Gold River is also whole, and then Mather down here is actually split just a little bit. So this is the first map. Overall deviations, you can see, one is 0.9% over. Two is 1.1% under. Three is almost exact. Four is 0.2% over. And five is almost exact. So our total deviation is 2%. If you recall, we've had this discussion before, our total deviation has to be under 10% for these legal maps. And the closer to zero, the better, but we have a little bit of wiggle room. So this total deviation on this particular map is 2%, 0.9 to negative 1.1. Do we have any questions about this particular map? Does anybody want me to zoom in or show anything, or does anybody have any comments they want to make about this map or input?
We have a process about having the presentation and then public comment and then closing for public hearing. So if we could just proceed with the presentation?
Sure, sure. And just to be clear, when you do the public comment, the Board will also have their chance to make their comments at that point. Is that correct?
Then we close the public hearing, and at that point, the Board makes their comments.
Wonderful. Yeah, that's my mistake. I'll continue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Draft two, or version two. This one, again, we're trying to, as in the first draft, one of the things we did was to try to keep the kind of core of Rancher Cordova whole here. Do the same here in draft two, as you see, trying to keep that core whole. But it does a slightly different take of the, what you'd call the outskirts. In other words, we're kind of going south of the 50 freeway here and kind of taking all this area south of it, including Anatolia down here, most of Mather down here as well, coming around Rosemont. So this takes a larger kind of view of the, what you call kind of the more, a less dense district. A lot of land in it, but population-wise, it equals out to the same. So you can see it's only 1.1% over total deviation. District two, 1.5% under, mostly keeps Rosemont whole, takes a little bit of law rip here. 1.5% under. District three, 1.2% over. District four, 1.7% over. And District five, 2.6% under. So our total deviation in this one is about 3.3%. Sorry, 4.3%. Okay, I'll move on to the next draft iteration. Here's draft three. Draft three, again, tries to keep Anatolia whole, but this time moves it in with Mather to kind of keep a southern and a northern districts or divisions, or try to keep some south, some north. You can see this northern one comes a little further into the Rancher Cordova area and a little further in over here. This first is 1% over. Second, 0.7% over. Third, 0.3% over. Fourth, 0.5% under. And the fifth, 0.6%. So our total deviation on this is about, so 1%, it's like 1.7% total deviation. So it's a very low deviation again. Draft four. This one was made with not respecting the communities as much and looking more at a lot more of the kind of major streetways. So this one does split a few communities. I wanted to be clear, so you understood that. You can see here, we're splitting Rosemont. And we're also splitting the Anatolia area here. I know I say Anatolia, I know there's other communities over here, Sunridge Park Village as well, but I just say Anatolia area for. So this, excuse me, this setup, what it does, it does still keep the core of Rancher Cordova, the old area of Rancher Cordova whole. This one really puts a focus on that, trying to keep as much of that whole as possible. So you can see this district is 0.13% under. Second, 0.35% over. Sorry. Third, 1.49% under. The fourth, 0.78% over. And the fifth, 0.48% over. So our total deviation on this one is about 2.3%. The reason I bring up those total deviations, by the way, and the reason I keep talking about it, is that just lets you know there, we do have a lot of wiggle room on these maps. We kept them very close to the ideal populations to allow for a lot of wiggle room. So if you didn't like this line, moving it out is possible. Last, I'm going to talk about the public submission. We had one person contact us about the public submission. I sat down with that person and we drew a map together, which met all the requirements that they were looking for and that also met the legal requirements for this process. That, they may come back with more iterations or changes, but for the moment, this is the map that we drew. And then if they come with, they want to change or go to the public submission, we'll have that for the next meeting that we do with the Board. So, but now, it's the public submission we have. You can see here that the real goal of this one was trying to keep communities together, including the Rosemont and La Riviera communities. So there was a big goal in this one, as also the Rancher Cordova areas on north of Folsom Boulevard. So that was some of the goals, particularly in this public submission. Going through them, the first, as you see here, this is 4.24% over. The second is 1.75% over. All right, the third is 4.48% over, or sorry, under. The fourth is 3.53% over. And the fifth is 5.05% under. So our total deviation on this one is still under 10%. It's about 9.3% total deviation, which is still legal, with under that 10%. So this is a, this is a map that could be used as well. Like I said, I'm not sure if the person who made the public submission wants to change it. They may. And when they do, you know, we'll have updates to this. So I'll leave it at that and let the Chair take back over for.
Okay, so at this time, we're inviting any members of the public who would like to speak to. Please let the clerk of the Board know that.
I do have a couple of requests. First, I'd like to invite Faiza to speak. Go ahead, Faiza. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Faiza Mogul, and I live in Lincoln Village. I'd like to make a comment. Draft two for districting, I liked what was done with District three because it keeps Lincoln Village together right up to a point, the Mather Heritage Trail. I think that's a natural division and it makes sense from on the ground living in the community. I also like about draft two, the District four area gives the Mather Sports Complex to, for example, the Rockingham Apartments, the Chesapeake Apartments, the Bishop's Court. So you have like dense multifamily housing, and it is also a natural use for, if you live in that community, that is sort of like your home base for a park. So I like that the community is kept together and that the border makes sense. Having said that, I don't necessarily need the draft to be draft two. I'm just really a fan of how those two communities were divided. So if you could replicate that in more versions, I'd be very happy with that. And I want to say that it's important to me that we do explore districting because I personally feel that it is sorely needed to be able to have one rep and better representation, especially for under-representation. to be able to have one rep and better representation, especially for underrepresented communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to now invite Angel Ball to comment.
Hi, Angel. Okay, got it. I'm sorry, I'm trying to zoom and find my documents and all that happy stuff. Okay, my name is Angel Ball and I live in the Cordova Vineyards neighborhood. I do want to understand better. So this is a question. I know that you had a January 24th meeting and then this meeting is March 16th, the final meeting for this item. So that's a question. I want to thank Fabian and the park for allowing me to have time with him to develop the public map that you're seeing tonight. And here is my comment. Since 1992, my family has advocated for parks, specifically Fettersfield, also known as Ranch Cordova Park, established in 1957. From 1992 to about 2018, Fettersfield Park has been in trouble. And conditions were on a downward spiral. During those years, it was very hard to watch the conditions degrade, trees die, amenities removed with no replacement. I'll never forget the park meeting that CRPD held where the community was asked for suggestions and we gave them. Based on the actions that took place, it was clear the decisions did not take into consideration the public suggestions. Our pool was turned into a duck pond, then destroyed, filled in with dirt, and then some grass seed was thrown out. I do not recall one suggestion matched what took place. There were five board members then with no accountability to me, my family or my neighbors. It is my opinion, this is the way it goes when citizens have to rely on five instead of one. Over the last 30 years, we've never had one person we can discuss our needs with for our park. Now, in the last seven years, one of you has taken considerable interest in my neighborhood park. Talking to the other four of you was nice, but in the end, no help with my park concerns or issues. While I all, while I do agree that you all at large care about the overall CRPD mission, I do support district elections. Now, I must say, I did struggle just a bit with my comments and I hate going back over bad times in the park's history, but not bad enough to not make them. I feel that Patrick Larkin has made a huge contribution and difference in our parks over the last five years. I know even with districts, Patrick Larkin and team will continue to improve our park system. My comments about map one and map two basically are that they divide Fettersfield Park into two different districts. And I'm not sure if there's any other park in the system that's divided by a street. But it's not acceptable for my neighborhood to have the park in two separate districts. I believe you should live in the district you represent and I recommend that you take action to move forward with districts. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Do we have any other further public comment?
I am checking. The customer service line has no requests. And I do not see additional hands raised.
Okay, so at this time, then we will close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. And I would like to invite Director Sloan to ask any questions or make any comments he wishes.
Okay, um, this is, this is tough because it's with, with now, we have five different versions we're looking at. It's hard for me to I, I wish I could be in one room and have these five on a board in front of me to go back and forth easily. But I don't have that, that ability with each one being a separate entity. What I would like to address is the issue of which of these configurations would group two of existing board members in it so that they would be forced to run against each other. I know, I think there might be a couple of, of the configurations that would put a Gold River in with Anatolia or when we start doing that kind of thing, I was looking at the, the last one, I think it was I think it was diagram four, we have a little bit of overlap with my community up in in the Breka area and, and north of Highway 50. And then there's a little bit of, goes down all the way down to Kiefer, I believe. And I, and I do believe that Chair Leibach is below Kiefer. But that's, I mean, I don't mind the part where we overlap in this community because I think it, it, it does, it does bring more attention to those areas where if we have two different board members that are focusing on this, the same areas, even though we were not in the same boundary. But I, I do like that idea. I do like the idea of keeping the kind of, who was Director? Or is he Secretary Danzel? Or what is he? I think he's secretary now. Keeping that the, the business, the, the old town, the old district, kind of like keeping that a, a big chunk so that we have that historical area that seems to be, you know, a, a nice focus. And I liked the fact, I, I liked the fact that Gold River was separate. I don't know what the population of Gold River is by itself, if that, if that is, was one of the, I think that was one of the suggestions. I, I noticed that in some of the configurations, it, it, I, I like the idea of being divided by certain landmarks. So if it was like the configuration we're looking at right now on the screen, if you look at the green area and then the blue area, which is the Rosemont, that goes to north of the freeway. And I think I would like, I like the configurations where it, if we do choose that to separate completely, then it would separate it just right at that, right at the freeway. Like that, space like that. But on that one, I don't understand because it looks like a lot of that one is a lot of open, open land, which is Mather air, airbase, airport. And with a little bit of Mather, where you're pointing it right there, of housing in that one little area down there, that's, that's kind of, that kind of separates it a lot. I, I don't know if that was one of my favorite ones, but I do like the idea that it does, you have the area where it goes right here, north, yeah, that area north of the freeway and then south of the way. But I did like number four, go to number four. I, I, I mean, this one has a good feel to me, but then, then again, look at the purple. I'm not so sure that we're not putting Yearwood and, and, and Rias competing against each other. And whether that even puts anybody in the yellow area that I know of. You know what I mean? So that's sort of a, that's the one that I, I, I like the, I like the blue. Because I like the overlap there, but if, if it can't work, it's not going to work. I know this one does not affect Chair Leibach. I don't believe. But I do like the fact that we both have a vested interest in Rosemont and, and, and and the area that I live in is sort of a, sort of the area that's not real connected. They don't have, they used to have a homeowners association. They, they dropped it and and they don't have much of a voice, which I can, you know, I'm, I'm always one to listen. I do know some people who residents that I could approach to ask any questions. But that's basically the one that, that the community park they have there is the, is the Larchmont Community Park, where they have the big soccer fields. And that's always been a little bit of an issue and it, it does go next to a, a school, I think. Early wine or something like that. So basically I, I'm going to let other board members speak and, and hopefully if I have more questions, I, I can come back to. But I, I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm not, you know, I think, I understand the idea of, of why we're doing this. But the thought of just focusing on that one area, it, it bothers me. Because I, I have just as much vested interest in Angel Ball's areas of where she lives and where Inez lives and, and where, you know, Director Yearwood lives. I, I, I care about the whole district. And I just hope that that idea is further when this becomes a reality, that we don't just get so narrow sighted that we've got plow things over our eyes that we only see as far as our own boundaries. I, I think that's, that would be hurting the district a lot. So I think the extra eyes on the district is important. So.
Thank you. I just, can I, can I ask a chair, am I allowed to ask a clarifying question?
Go for it.
Okay, specifically on this map, you talked about this area of La Riviera that's cut here. That was mostly done for population. So i- in your estimation, or Sloan, if we were to do, if we were to put this into the green and cut it here instead.
It would just, see, you said certain landmarks are used to separate. So you, I just thought, I just thought Highway 50 was a, a good landmark, you know, made sense to me.
And if we were to put that population wise, coming in here, similar to how we did in this public submission, would that be a little bit, would that be preferable to coming up here in that draft?
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely, 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 right.
Perfect. That's, that's perfect for me. Thank you.
So looking at right there. I think that works with, for everybody, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, is that, are you, for now, done, Director Sloan?
Yeah.
Okay, so Director Danzel, would you like to make your comments and our questions?
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, for me, a couple of the maps, I mean, I, I'm looking not just at what's happening right now, I'm looking at the maps 10 years from now, when we, when the district has to redo this again. And knowing that the population in this current map is that Sunridge area is going to grow, that purple area is going to grow with population, that map's going to continue to change. That's what I look at and try to look at in all these maps is how much districts are going to change over time as population grows. I do have to agree with Angel Ball on the point, Fabian, that splitting a park up probably isn't, probably isn't the best thing. I mean, I, I know it's maps and, and we're looking at it from, you know, we're looking at this from 10,000 feet up. But at the same time, we need to, you know, keep, keep a park that's, has the same name underneath the same, same boundaries.
And that was in drafts one and two, right? Specifically, could you remind me the park that was doing that?
Uh, Fettersfield.
And Fettersfield is where?
Uh, zoom in. Okay, keep going. Uh, you're going to pull your, let's see. So you're going to pull down, pull your screen down, up the other way, the other way.
Sorry. Is it this one right here?
Yep, that one, that one right there.
Understood. Fettersfield, okay, thank you.
That, that is one, it is one park, it is divided by a road. We do have a couple of other parks coming, coming online eventually that are going to do the same thing. In one of the bigger areas, we have Rio del World, that's going to have a park, you know, it's a hundred acre park and I think it's another 25 acres or something on the other side of the road. So I'm just looking at that. I would have to agree with Angel Ball on that. Keeping that in the same district would be manageable to me. Um, but like I said, looking now, great, they're all, they're all fine for the next eight years. But in 2030 census, you know, that map is going to change greatly. I mean, you, you've, you've worked with areas on other, other communities and you've seen maps change. This map, most likely because that red area is going to grow greatly in the next 10 years. You're going to have to do a lot of work in 10 years and that's what I'm trying to, me personally, trying to just make it easier. So districts aren't, you know, that district is going to massively change. Um, you know, I'm not worried about where directors live right now, you know, it is what it is. Like I said, my, my comments in the records that I would like to keep the original three parks, the Cordova Recreation Park District, which is Hagan, which is Fettersfield and Allstrom Park, those three in the same, same district. I know that, I mean, right here, you've got half of Fetters and Allstrom and in, in two different districts, but you know, it's, it's the five of us that have to make that choice. That was my ask that I was allowed to ask, just as any other director, any public can ask. We, um, we had another person from the public say that she would like to keep this area together and that, that's perfect. I have no problem with that. Um, like I said, my biggest thing is looking towards the future and how districts are going to change. Other than that, I'm not a, not a big fan of that, that wagon wheel one. I think, I don't remember which one it is. Where, uh, yeah, number four, just because it's, it's going to, it's going to change again. You know, it keeps all of Rancher together, which all of North Highway 50 of Rancher together, doesn't keep all of Rancher together. But, you know, it, they're just going to drastically change over time. Looking at population, that area isn't going to, isn't going to change much with, with population. It's going to grow a little bit as time goes, but it's not going to drastically change in its lines.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's my two cents. Otherwise, you know, I, I love the, you know, Angel's suggestion on, on her submission. I, you know, I wish more people, I, I personally sent this information out to over 120 community members and said, hey, here, here's your opportunity to look at these, get a hold of the district. You know, send in your information and, and get a hold of these people because if you don't like what's here, your voice needs to be heard. This is, in a sense, the start of, start of an election for them. And how they want to, want to place things out. So I don't know, it doesn't look like too many people reached out. But it, you know, and unfortunately, I, I wish more people would. So that's where I sit tonight.
Okay, thank you, Director Danzel. Secretary Yearwood.
Um, I had a question, a general question, then I'll make some comments about the actual drafts. So if the street is the boundary, I don't know. Say it's Zimphandell, where there's houses on one side of the street and houses on the other side of the street. And the boundary is Zimphandell. I don't have a specific map for that. I'm just using that as an example.
Right.
So do people who live on one side of the street live in one district and the people on the other side of the street live in another district?
That is correct. So for instance, looking at Folsom here, and this is a good example. People on the northern section of Folsom, on the north side of Folsom, I know, I realize Folsom doesn't have a ton of people living on Folsom. I get that, just using this as the example. Um, north side of Folsom, you're in district, what is this, district one was on here, and south of Folsom, you're in district four. And we typically use streets as dividing lines because they're very easy to follow. Oftentimes, when you're in residential areas, let me see if I can find one that does it well. You can see here in a residential area. Okay, so this is Benita, right? So people on this side of Benita would be in this red district. The other side of Benita would be in this purple district. So oftentimes, it does look like, well, why don't we keep all of Benita together? Why wouldn't we just draw the line here is what the question becomes, right? So the reason we don't typically do that is because census geography also follows street lines. And this is, we were talking about this the last time we met. When we draw these districts, we have to use census blocks because that is the lowest level we have to count for. And so if the census doesn't split it there, we can't effectively split it there and understand, hey, there's 400 people here in this part of Benita, we're going to put it in this district because we don't know what the census says about it. Because we just know all of this area up to El Monte would be one block, right? So that's a great question.
Yeah, that makes sense that the, you can't drive down enough to get the accurate number. Is there 200 people on one side of the street versus 150 on the other side of the street? Okay. I just know it's going to be, it'd be weird for people to go, hey, who's, who are you voting for? And they go, oh, that's not on my ballot. I got the other guy on my ballot, that kind of thing. So, but that makes sense. Thank, thank you for that clarification. But that makes sense. Thank, thank you for that clarification. Um, as for the drafts themselves, um. Let me go back here, I gotta figure out which one it was. I think it's two. Yeah, that's the one. I'm not a big fan of that mast- massive district one there, where all of the, basically the more undeveloped part of the, the district is one district. That's a, that's a big area for somebody to have to represent, so. But so I probably would not be in favor of of that map. And let's see here. And I think was district draft four, is that the one that Director Danzel called the wagon wheel? Was that the one?
Yeah, that was the one, right, this, come around the side like that, right.
Yeah, that one, that is kind of interesting. Uh, and I, that one concerns me because it basically dips down at some point in the Anatolia community and takes a. A good, a good chunk of it and puts it in a, so, so, you know, totally different, uh. I'm trying to zoom in here and see what the boundary is here on a road.
It's right here, this is, looks like Chrysanthony, Chrysanthi right here, and then it comes around, just kind of grabs an area over here. But this is Chrysanthi.
Which is interesting because I'm looking at it, the line cuts down through what will eventually, I think, will be our park, and on the other side of it, the east will be a school off a hedgehead.
I'm guessing right around here or right around here somewhere.
Um, God, your screens, I'm too, my eyes are too old for what you're doing, I can't lie. It's just, it was just interesting, I don't know if I'd be in favor of taking that community and slicing it, putting it into two. So, but um, I mean, the other maps, um. And I agree with Angel, I didn't, I didn't catch that Fettersville had gotten sliced in half on one of, on the two of the maps. But uh. I mean, overall, I know these are gonna be tweaked and, you know, and, you know, these are definitely nowhere close to being the final ones, but. I would, would probably say two and four, I I would not consider in the current form they're in. And the other ones, I mean, they're fine, uh, I, I think I kind of like one, with the exception of it cutting Fettersville in two. Um, but I mean, that's, that looks pretty good. Kind of shows you where all the population is to that, that, uh, one that's kind of old Rancho is pretty consistent, it's usually pretty small in that one little area. The other ones can all fan out some and, and uh, you know, pick up some real estate to, for their, and not pick up too much population. Um, there was one other thing I wanted to ask, it, was there any? And I can't remember, I thought, I don't know, somebody brought this up or I, but um. Th- this doesn't look at like how many parks are in each dist- or each uh district, right?
No, no, we, we weren't, we weren't trying to draw, you know, to make sure each district had four parks or anything of that nature, this was more population equality. Um, we could definitely attempt to do something like that. The problem is oftentimes when you're trying to do that, the population equality becomes an issue. Just because you have far more parks in, you know, the denser areas than you do in the outskirts areas, and so then you're trying to piece it together in a way that might not work well.
Yeah, and a lot of the newer areas tend to have, uh. You know, smaller neighborhood parks and things like that really close to each other, so yeah, that would, that probably wouldn't make much sense. Um, that's about all I have. Thank you for all your work.
Okay, my turn. Um, so. For me, the primary focus would to keep some community identity there. So, um, with all due respect to the involvement that Director Sloan has in Rosemont, that's Director Sloan. And ten years down the road, you know, he may not be in that office anymore. So I I I would rather look to keeping co- community cohesiveness. So, uh, Breka, Larchmont, Riviera, Rosemont, Lincoln Village. And sometimes those communities might end up in the same district, but try not to split communities in half when you're drawing these maps. Um, I, yeah, especially as also uh map number two, I really don't like and. Uh, and largely for the reason that Director Yearwood mentioned it. As, as a population grows in that area through development, all of a sudden, you're gonna have one representative, you know. Um, for a large number of people, and yes, that will get corrected with the next census. But um, in the meantime, it, it could make one person's responsibilities, you know, too onerous, really. Um, so I I don't like that, even though it may have been maybe easy to draw that map. Because there's a lot of undeveloped area in it right now, it's not gonna stay that way. So that's, that's kind of where I fall, trying to keep communities together. And certainly don't split a park in half, that I know, I'm sure that's an easy tweak to fix. I know you're trying to follow census blocks.
Right.
Um, but um, nonetheless, that one has to be fixed.
Sure, absolutely.
Even though I have to say, there's a, there's an argument for that, if uh, if Angel is still on the line, is that you get to bug. Two uh directors if you have an issue in your park, but, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, because then you're. You know, two thirds the way to a majority vote on an issue for your park, so. Um, I I see your hand, Rick, but I'm not done yet, okay? So anyway, I would like to keep Rosemont together, I am not, Rosemont, Larchmont Riviera, Lincoln Village, Old Rancho. Those uh, uh, Gold River, those areas that already have community identity, I'd like to see that community identity kept together. I frankly, while I certainly appreciate that I would not want to have to run against someone who is currently a fellow director. I just um find that something I don't want to think about because of what's gonna happen in. Uh, you know, as the board makeup changes in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, then, you know, it's, it becomes a moot point at that. At that time, so I'd rather look at the overall, um, what's best for the district. Rather than trying to make sure that we don't, and and I appreciate that, I don't want to run against a fellow board member. I, i- if I choose to run, I don't want to run against Director Sloan, he's a fabulous director. But in the long run, down the road, it's gonna be different people in those um seats on the board, and so. I find it hard to make that a reason to draw the map today in, in that kind of a way. So those are, I I do have a question, it's not so much about the maps, but um. If there's a mid-election vacancy, does that mean the district has to pay for a special election rather than have? Um, the board appoint the vacancy? Does anyone know that?
Hmm.
You know, if maybe um, we could look into that for, and and get a response for you for the next meeting would be good. If anyone has a, off the, Fabian, I'm not sure if you have the answer to that, or Matt or Bob.
You said, ask that question again, what was the question again?
If there's a vacancy uh in a district, so say district one, the um. Director moves out of the area, does the board appoint, or do you have to run a special election within district one? That's my question.
It depends on whatever your succession plan is within your, within your bylaws or your structure or charter. Um, but my guess is you have the ability to, like they do for city councils or school boards.
Ah, okay, great, thank you. Okay, I'm done. Um, I seem to, um, Director Sloan, you had um more you would like to say?
Yeah, I just uh wanna. Piggyback on what you mentioned too to, to Angels. The, the, having, I don't think it's that bad of an idea to have two directors that you can talk to, it's. You know, it's, it's almost like a possibility of having two votes out of, out of the three that you need. Another thing is that even with, that's, that was my idea, I mean, uh. When it comes to having communities that are overlapping.
You don't understand.
Then you have two directors, not just one. So I think, I think, and then, and and as the, as time moves on, talking about in the long run. When, or, you know, you know, I'm not gonna be running forever, and there, so there, there's gonna be an open seat, when there's an open seat, once that happens. Then you have the rejuvenation, the uh, a whole new influx of, of candidates. Who are gonna, you know, come forward and uh hopefully be a good part of the, of the solution, how that we can make the district. Even better than it is now. So I think there's, there's a lot of good pluses for overlaps. And especially if it was a park, a big community park, it would be a plus to have two directors focused on that one big giant park. That's all.
Um, I just wanted to, before, and Chair, just really quickly to clarify. Uh, I did take notes for everybody, and I just wanted to mention a couple of things to make sure I had them correct. And um, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna list off kind of the, the things I've heard, and then if I mischaracterize anything, please, you know, jump in and tell the Chair you want to speak so you can correct me on this. Um, I heard uh that the Fetterspiel, try not to split Fetterspiel would be a nice thing. Uh, so we can adjust that in a couple of the drafts that we did that in. Um, I also heard that there is a concern about the size of this larger kind of district on this one. So keep that in mind. Um, I also heard, excuse me, not to split communities wherever possible, including, we heard something about here, we heard about Rosemont. Um, so trying to keep that, and then the last part I heard was, um, one second. Uh, one, two, four. On the wagon wheel, that was awesome, and splitting the Anatolia area and try not to split this Anatolia area, because i- in this one, I think, uh. I'm not sure, I think Director Yearwood might have mentioned that it's actually gonna split what will be a park and a school, and trying not to do that. So those are the kind of like the main uh things I heard, did I mischaracterize any of that, or did I miss any thing that was really important to anybody? I just wanted to check in.
It was okay by me, Director Sloan.
I think you got it all, what you're looking at, but I I had one more comment to make, it just came to my mind. Um, when you're dealing with a community park as opposed to a neighborhood park, we have a, so many community parks within our district. So if that was a Hagan Community Park or Larchmont Community Park, or, you know, and a Heron Landing Community Park is in someone's district. To me, it's, it's, it's community, it means the whole district. It's not just that neighborhood, so I, there's, I guess it would be something that would be written into the bylaws or of, of this redistricting that. That all community parks would have a, a more of a voice of, of all directors. Or at least someone could approach a director who doesn't live there because it's a community park. Did he? Any ideas about this idea?
Pretty sure that's sort of antithetical to the whole concept.
The community park part?
Well, it, the idea is that each area has its own representative. So I I don't think you can carve out except for this community park, I I just don't see how that would even work.
One, one thing I can say with regard to that, having experience with lots of different districted bodies. Um. You rep, say this were the map, and somebody, you know, represented this district here, which had Hagan Community Park, and. If a community member came up to their representative and was trying to get something done, and their representative wasn't hearing or wasn't. They didn't think they were listening, I mean, the reality is that community member could approach another board member. I mean, there's nothing against that, just because it's not their district, but the, the board member obviously wouldn't say, you're not my district, get out of here, I'm not gonna look. They of course would take the comment, um, and then pass that on to the other director, so. I mean, the community typically understands that. Um, but yes, you, that, the idea is that one director would be, have this community park within their district. And would probably take the majority of the comments for that part, um, when it came from the community.
Yeah, I think that's right, there's nothing to prevent, Rick, uh, you know, members of the community from lobbying different members of the board.
Absolutely.
Just because they uh are in separate districts, I think that happens a lot in um government. That when you, uh, you not only call your own representative, but you call the representative for the people next door and the other, and and try and get as many on board as you can. And certainly nothing in this process would, would prevent you from doing that.
Well, it's gonna be a lot of uh reeducating the whole process of, with Brett eyes, of how to, uh, how directors now are gonna be able. To be responsible for just one little area as opposed to the entire district, I mean, that's gonna be a whole new education.
Well, I wouldn't think that you would, just because you're the representative, say district one, I mean, you're their representative, but you're still gonna be a representative of the whole district. I wouldn't think, um, you know, I would hope somebody wouldn't go, oh, that's not my district, go talk to that director.
You would hope, but that's, I'm just saying that, that's how we feel, because that's where we are right now, but the future, what is the future gonna hold?
And and people still have to understand, you're still one voice of five, um, you're an advocate, yeah, maybe for the district you represent, but. Um, if, you know, you still, it's, it, for a majority still has to agree with whatever, you know, maybe somebody's asking to be done. Uh, it's just to get more of a, I know, you know, the, the person that, uh. I don't know, uh, that way an area kind of has their representative, but I hope, I mean, I hope people understand that, uh. Just because you're gonna quote unquote maybe represent one district, that doesn't mean what you want to get for your district, that person's gonna be able to get for them. It's still, the same process still applies, it has to go over the whole board, and the whole board has, you know, majority of the board has to agree upon it, so. But yeah. I would agree with, it's something, too, real quick, just something Terry said, that, you know, I think it's definitely more important for us to try to keep communities together and um. Not try to figure out, uh, you know, are we gonna have to run against somebody else or whatever the case might be? Uh, because in the long run, it it's been more important to keep communities together, um. So, but that's it.
And and I I do think draft three does a better job of keeping most of these communities together. Mayther's Hole, Rosemont's Hole, Larchmont, Robert Arrow's Hole, Gold River's Hole, it doesn't have that giant, you know, space, Anatolia's Hole. Uh, not saying, by the way, I'm not advocating for this map to be chosen by me, I'm just saying, I think this map does a better job based on some of the comments we had, so.
I would agree with you, one in three or more, and the one that Angel did wasn't uh, was kind of in that uh frame as well, the one you helped her with.
Right, that's very, very similar, if you look at uh the two maps, there's some, a little difference in here, but you can see, we have very similar lines in some of these things. Because um Shelby said some of the same interests as the board uh with a lot of this.
Carolina.
Uh, yes, Director Danzel.
I I'm looking at this, and the, the only thing that changes in the district by districting for us currently is that. There's a smaller group of people that. That vote for us, because I still represent the district as a whole, my, the finances for the district or as a whole, unless. Unless in this current, current map that he has got, that Fabian's got up. That the red area decides that they want to put a tax on themselves to turn around and raise more money. I mean, they still, the, the only thing that changes is that they have one person or two or three people to vote for on that one election. That represent that small portion, they don't represent the whole district in, 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 in that piece. But, you know, financially, they represent the district, voting, they represent the district, they're not just fighting for their one area, because that was a concern we had. A couple of years ago when we started talking about this, and we have seen that in other areas in big cities that, oh, well, that's my district, and I'm in a fight for my district. The problem is that the money is the money here, we don't have excess, like certain cities or certain counties where, where we can turn around and fight over that. We, we know that the dollars for the district are there, the only way those dollars are gonna change is if that red district decides that they want to tax themselves. And give themselves their own PMR ID or or something like that, to my correct knowledge, right, Patrick?
Correct.
I mean, so say that I represent the red district and, and Angel Ball were to come over to me because I know where Angel lives. Angel were to come over to me in the red district because she happened to be visiting a park and talk to me in the red district because, oh wait, there are not physical boundaries, she can cross them. Um, and talk to me about a park, you know, in her neighborhood in the purple district. It doesn't, doesn't matter, it, I still represent the district, so it's, it's truly only voting is what we're changing here, we're not changing the, the makeup of the district, we're just changing who. We're not changing the, the makeup of the district, we're just changing who those people have a chance to vote for versus, well, you know. Rick, Rick says he lives in this area and I live in this area, and we're on opposite ends, but we're both up at the same time. And nobody knows either of us, then, you know, they, they flip a coin. This gives the public an opportunity to get to know. Their electeds a little better, if their electeds choose to be out in the public. If they don't, if they don't answer emails, they don't answer phone calls, they're not out in the public, they're not gonna get elected in that district. And that's the way I look at this. So it, you know, the lines are the lines, but we're representing the district as a whole financially and. And every park, I care about every park, it's, I don't care about new parks versus old parks, any different. I mean, old parks have some, some things different there, but, you know, and financially, they're different than a new park, because we've just talked about that recently. But they're the, the, the parks of the district, not of my, not of my specific small district. So that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I'm, should know this, because I know we've been told, but could, Clerk Jones, could you tell us when the next public hearing is on this matter?
Yes, if the board desires, it would be on March sixteenth.
Okay.
It does have to be within forty-five days from today.
Okay, so that makes sense, to me at least, to have it at the next public meeting, we'll. Put another public hearing on the agenda. Okay, and so I'm assuming that in the meantime, you guys will be. Trying to tweak these maps a little bit.
Right, yeah, exactly. What we'll do is, you know, having taken the comments that we kind of went over. I'm gonna, we're gonna apply those to the different drafts. For instance, Draft Three might not have a ton of tweaks, because there wasn't a lot of the comments that applied to it, but Draft One. For instance, laying that park and try to fix that, try to fix splitting Mayther over here. We'll, we'll, we'll look into those types of specific issues that were brought up, tweak these maps a little bit. And then come back with adjusted versions that you can then look at. And, you know, and then at the next meeting, you want to at that point, take a board action and take a couple of maps out of the consideration and forward a couple of that. Make more small tweaks, you know, whatever the board desires at that point. Keeping in mind also, we still have time to set the numbering and set the election cycle.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. So I think since there's no action to be taken at this public hearing. We will move on to our regular calendar.
Thank you. Item G one is to approve a list of survey agencies for the purpose of completing a classification. And total compensation study as recommended by the district's consultant, Ralph Anderson and Associates. And I'll turn it over to HR manager Andrea White to get us started on the item.
Good evening, Chair Lineback, Board of Directors. We're bringing this item forward for the board to, as stated. Approve a list of survey agencies to complete the class and total compensation study. We thought it was important to bring this list to the board of directors tonight, since this is not a process that. I've worked with this particular board with, or we haven't done this before, so we thought it was important to kind of talk about. Which agencies we'd be compared to for our classifications and our salaries in total compensation. And let you ask some questions and hear from our consultant. He is here this evening, he's joining us from out of the country, and, but he still made it, he's three hours ahead, I think it is. And he, I would like to introduce Doug Johnson. He is the Vice President of Ralph Anderson and Associates, and he's put together a presentation. And then be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, perfect. Yes, well, let me, let me not waste your time, I'm gonna walk through this presentation, and it will be fairly quick. Last page is kind of the one that requires kind of more input and discussion from the board. So as Andrea said, we are conducting a classification and compensation study for the organization. And one of the things that we are doing is looking at the compensation system. So we do a survey, and the reason we do a survey is because market data. informs the organization, so that you can make decisions and how to best position or, or set up your compensation plan. So it's kind of a matter of understanding what the market's doing now, where it might be headed. And it gives you a context, so that you're not guessing or rolling dice or throwing darts at a dartboard, it gives you context. It's data that gives you an insight into what peer organizations are paying jobs, and then you can use that information to make appropriate decisions. The, the name of the game at the end of the day is to optimize the district's ability to recruit employees when you have an opening. And then hopefully minimize turnover. Turnover can be expensive, you hire somebody and after three years they're gone. That's expensive, you want to keep those, those good employees. This is a practice that public employers do on occasion, private employers do it as well. It's less transparent in the private sector. They buy data, they do those, these kinds of, you know, decisions more internally. When a public agency does it, it's much more transparent. So that's why we're having a conversation tonight, because when we're doing a survey, we want to select agencies. So when we look at a compensation plan, there are some policy components that kind of are building blocks. Only one of which we're talking about tonight, but I want to just kind of highlight them. And the first is the labor market selection, what agencies are surveyed. Since we have some choices, we could probably carve up several different options in terms of survey agencies. It's important to get the board's input on that, but after we get the survey complete. We will revisit things like market position, and market position means where do you want to put your compensation plan relative to these agencies? If you survey ten or twelve agencies, do you want to be at the middle of that market, or do you want to be higher than that or lower than that? So those are things that we can talk about at a later date, they don't have to be discussed tonight, but just letting you know that's a policy decision. Survey elements, we're doing a pretty comprehensive survey, looking at base salary, cash benefits, insurance and retirement benefits, all the major buckets. And that way we know whether or not there's something that's different in your benefits compared to the marketplace, and then of course, we're looking at the range structures themselves. So when we select a marketplace, there's a number of factors we can consider, and these are kind of purposely in a circle, because. I can't say that any one of them is more important than another, there's kind of a balancing of these factors. So one, one thing to consider is that if you, if you've surveyed certain employers in the past. It makes sense to continue that to the degree everybody's on the same page and likes those agencies. In the absence of having a formal set of agencies or any kind of known past practice, then you would look at nature of services. We want agencies that have the park and recreation and golf services that you do. We would look at geographic proximity, that idea is that an agency that's very close to you is a much more direct competitor. We don't really care what's happening with a park district down in Los Angeles, or even in the Bay Area, they're not in your marketplace that you're, you're competing with. We also look at employer size, so there may be some very small districts that don't have enough jobs, or really operationally are not large and similar to you. There also could be agencies that, that could be too large, so we want to make sure we're kind of looking at that size factor. And last, we would look at economic similarity. Generally, if we can stay within the Sacramento region, in this instance, we don't really have a big concern. Yes, we could probably parse out the higher cost of living or more expensive regions in and around the Sacramento and surrounding county region. And we, we look at this number, but it's not necessarily something that we have to actually adjust, because we're, we're hopefully staying within the Sacramento region. So nature of services, predominantly looking at cities and special districts. If there are enough special districts, that'd be ideal, because they have the same kind of circumstances you in terms of their revenues. And being a special district, but we know that you compete directly with city government, and maybe even county operations in terms of similar types of jobs. As I said, geographic proximity, looking at the Sacramento region, if there's enough employers within that region, then that's sufficient. We can sometimes look at commuting corridors, so maybe we might look at a region that at, at most is looking at surrounding counties, maybe down into Solano a little bit. I don't think all the way to Vallejo, but maybe down to Fairfield, maybe you could go south down to Stockton. If you find enough agencies without going that far, though, better to stay as close as you can. As I said before on size, we want to make sure we don't have guppies, we don't want really small agencies that don't have jobs that are comparable. I don't know that I worry as much about a large agency. It, it may have an impact on how management jobs are compared, and we can control for that. So when we're looking at survey agencies, those line positions, a recreation coordinator, a recreation supervisor. You know, a landscape maintenance worker, greenskeeper, those jobs are really not gonna very much based on size, but certainly a management job would. And I mentioned before economic similarity, we do use an index published by the Economic Research Institute that gives us two things, which is kind of cool. One is looking at cost of living, so that's kind of the goods and services, housing, transit, taxes. It's very much like the CPI, but CPI is not a relative measure, CPI is a point in time to another point in time measure. But this index is actually derived to say, what's the cost of living in Sacramento compared to Roseville, compared to Rockland, compared to Placerville? So we can look at whether or not we have any significant differences. We can also look at relative wages, wages work differently than cost of living. The wages probably in Sacramento are gonna be relatively similar when we look at this index. But where it kind of shines is, when I work with the city of Sacramento, their, some of their, their survey work looks at the city of San Francisco. And so they use this index to discount the San Francisco data, because obviously the cost of living is much, much greater there. Now, it may be two hundred percent higher in cost of living, but maybe only have thirty or forty percent greater salary level. And that's just the dynamic of wages don't necessarily match differences in cost of living. People will make sacrifices, and if they're gonna live in the city, they live in a smaller place, or don't have a car, or maybe have a roommate, et cetera. So these are things we look at, again, if we are staying in the Sacramento region, it's probably unlikely that this will be necessary information, but it's certainly a tool we can look at. So we looked at some target criteria, we looked at nature of services, special districts and cities and counties. Obviously, public agencies are going to be the best comparables, because they operate with similar types of funding streams. Similar type of clientele and services in the regionally based. We would ideally stay within sixty miles, it's not that you couldn't have somebody commuting beyond that. But certainly if you get to a hundred miles or two hundred miles, that's a relocation, and we're really not interested in looking at that for most jobs. We're looking at who are the agencies that you're directly competing with, meaning a prospective employee has choices. And none of those choices mean they have to sell their house and move or something at that level. And then lastly, on the size and economic similarity, we just want to make sure we have balance, so we don't have a, a survey, a set of survey agencies that are not loading up. And just all larger agencies are all smaller. So we've taken that information and we've created this list. Now, this list started out as a bigger list. Not a whole lot bigger, but maybe double this number of agencies. So we looked at all the special districts within. The kind of surrounding counties of Sacramento, we looked at cities and those surrounding counties. And then we did consider, you know, the counties, we looked at Sacramento and El Dorado and Placer and San Joaquin and Solano County as possibilities. And this is kind of the derivation of kind of analyzing options and alternatives. And just kind of going left to right, the kinds of things that we're looking at, population served. Obviously, these, these population served numbers are a point in time, and we're grabbing these from either the latest annual report budget or from a website. So I know that sometimes these numbers can be in flux, and some of these agencies are certainly in a growth mode, but these are the population served figures. We have driving distance, that gives us our location, and all these are within, in fact, the, the furthest away would be thirty-one miles. If we want to look at Placerville as kind of the, the county seat for El Dorado County, that would be the furthest away. We look at expenditures and, and revenues, has given us kind of an additional way of looking at size. And then we have our two cost of living and our wage index from the Economic Research Institute. And the way that index works is Cordova Recreation and Park District is kind of zeroed out as one hundred. And so then if we go down the list, Carmichael, if we just look at the COL column, the cost of living, ninety-eight point six percent. And that means that location is ninety-eight point six percent the cost of living of Cordova. At least in terms of where you look your home, your home office employment center is. And then if we look at Sunrise, that cost of living is a hundred and one point seven, so that's one point seven percent higher. And you can see Southgate is kind of anomaly, goes over, you know, ten, it's, it's a hundred and twelve. Otherwise, these numbers are, are kind of generally, when we get down to lower counties, they go a little bit up as well. But cost of living is going to generally be fairly close, and where we might be troubled is if most of these numbers were ten, fifteen, twenty percent greater. You can see, though, that the wage index shows very, very little difference, as I said before. These are all ninety-nine point something figures, which means that this index, which is derived from taking survey data from hundreds of surveys. And they derive this index through regression analysis, what they're saying is that an accountant. In the community that Cordova serves, compared to these other communities, is generally gonna be paid about the same across. A diverse group of employers. So this isn't a public sector measure, it's a diverse group of private sector employers that's utilized. So I think between those two indexes, we're kind of comfortable that we have a, a, a group of agencies that represents the region and isn't out of bounds in terms of cost of living. And lastly, we just had a number of parks, you know, counting parks maybe gets a little weird in some agencies, but that was our best effort in terms of identifying the number of parks. And then there's three with golf, although I will admit, golf is going to be a different, a difficult job to get data for, simply because. Most agencies that have golf operations, it seems these days, contract out the, the actual employees that are during, doing the turf maintenance and. And doing kind of the golf activities in terms of starters and that sort of thing. So if, we don't need that data, if it becomes necessary, we, we might have some different things we can do. But what ends up happening is most organizations, you have solid jobs that you can compare, and then you have an internal kind of benchmarking process you can use. To be able to set jobs where you don't find an abundance or enough survey data. So with that, I'll stop, because the objective tonight is to get your input on these thirteen agencies, and the input could be. Thumbs up, this looks great, you're comfortable with us proceeding with a survey using these agencies. It could be that you see something missing in here that's important to you, you could have a concern of something in here. I will say just candidly, I worry more about a missing agency, because if you were to tell me, hey, I really would rather have this or want this agency in the mix. I can add that in, and we can show that data later, or we can say, we did the survey, we didn't get productive information. We can get some more insight into that. If later on, when I meet with you, you, you look at this and you say, well, gosh, I wish we had this agency. We know we have to take time to go back and get that data. So that's kind of my thought is, to the degree that this isn't your perfect list, I prefer to. If it's either the perfect list, great, if it's not, then, you know, tell me agencies that you think are missing. Or you can identify ones that you think, for whatever reason, might be problematic, and we can, we can talk about that. So with that, I'll, I'll be quiet and get your input.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item, Clerk Jones?
I did not see any requests.
Okay, Director Sloan, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I don't.
Uh, Director Densel?
No, I'm looking at the, the list here, and they, they look, look like who I wanna, wanna be up against, so yeah, thank you.
Secretary Yearwood?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments, questions, I'm fine with the list.
I'm fine with the list of special districts, I have a question about cities and counties. And hopefully, I'm just. Hopefully, my assumption is correct, I don't know. So when you're looking at the cities, you're looking at their parks department?
Correct.
Okay, because sometimes if you look at, say, like a city manager, who's managing, you know, a budget of.
Police and fire.
Six hundred million dollars, right? I mean, that would not be the same as, you know, the general manager, you know, of the park district.
Yeah, I think so, generally, I'm working with a park district down in the Bay Area, and we, we show that data kind of as an aside. You know, there is, there are some folks that look at that as a CEO, as a CEO, but you're right, that the special district general manager is going to be much more comparable, one to one. So we typically will show the data in a few different formats, and, and it may be that in those cities, we're looking at the Parks and Rec director as kind of a comparable. One would argue that since they don't report to a board, that's not quite the same as a general manager, although they typically will work with commissions and. That sort of thing, but yes, we'll factor that in as we do the survey.
And, and no, there are no perfect. Equivalent agencies anywhere, another Cordova out there with a hundred and twenty-eight thousand population and. Exact same revenues, I mean, there's, there's no perfect way to compare. I just wanted, I've seen some of these surveys before, where as you say, they just start comparing like CEO. And, and it's not always the same thing, particularly when there's a far different. Types of responsibilities and things like that. So, okay, that was all I had. So, thank you very much, it was very helpful and informative, and we look forward to the results of your survey.
All right, thank you.
I do want to comment that the general manager position is not included in the study, just as a side note. You may have already remembered that, but I agree when you take something like an HR manager, very different. But I agree when you take something like an HR manager, very different at a county than it would be for a special district. So I just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you. And no, I didn't remember that. So I love when I'm reminded. Oh, thank you. Okay. So we are now going to move on to item G2.
I think item G1 is an action item.
I'm sorry. It says approve. You're right. So I guess we're looking at a motion.
Chair Leinbach, I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Directors to approve the list of survey agencies for the purpose of completing a classification and total compensation study as recommended by the District's Consultant Ralph Anderson and Associates.
Second, I have a, okay, second. Okay. So we have a motion by Secretary Yearwood and a second by Director Danzall. Roll call please.
Director Sloan? Director Danzall?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Leinbach?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder Danielle. Now we'll go on to item G2.
Thank you. Item G2 is to approve the concept plan for the renovation of Alstrom Park Ball Field associated with the Rancho Cordova Little League renovation project. And just a helpful reminder for any of those members of the public who wish to comment on this item, you may raise your hand in the Zoom or send a request to me in the chat. So I'll turn it over now to Planning Manager Laura Taylor to get us started on the item.
Good evening Chair Leinbach and members of the board. Tonight we'll present the latest concept plan for the Rancho Cordova Little League renovation project. That project spans both the Alstrom Park property and the Folsom Cordova Unified School District, Cordova Lane property. The city's project manager Christine Corte is in the audience and will make a presentation. And also in support is John Courtney from LPA, the city consultant. And you've seen this project before. In April of 2016, a city representative from the consulting firm of Michael Baker International made a presentation to you and, and the board provided staff with some guidelines and, and direction on how to continue working with the city and the school district and Rancho Cordova Little League on how that project should materialize. And, and then in 2018, the city council approved the planning and design funding for the complex renovation of the legacy project. There have been two virtual community meetings in 2021 on this project and some of you attended. The first one was held in February and some of the public comments that came out of this first meeting included concern for increased neighborhood parking demands, a desire for wider walkways, requests for straight shade structures and questions about pedestrian and traffic safety and circulation. The second virtual community meeting was in late March. And that began to address some of the public concerns regarding safety and circulation along, especially along Zinfandel Drive. After the second community meeting, discussions with the Rancho Cordova Little League resulted in changes to the concept design. The changes included rotating the field on Cordova Rec and Park District property from its current orientation to a northwest facing orientation. CRPD staff requested the project be brought, brought to the Board of Directors at a regular public meeting so that the board and the surrounding community could be updated about the design changes. And then in addition to the standard board meeting notifications, CRPD staff notified the community about this meeting and this agenda item through online neighborhood social media platform next door. And we also posted a sign last Thursday on the fence of the Alstrom Park Ball Field that faces Zinfandel Drive. So people that live in the neighborhood have been able to see that sign up and know about this meeting coming up. The CRPD Board of Directors authority for approval is limited to the improvements proposed on CRPD property only. The renovation of the Alstrom Park Ball Field will be entirely funded through the city's Community Enhancement Fund and other city funding sources. The impact on CRPD's maintenance services will be addressed in a revised memorandum of understanding with the Rancho Cordova Little League. So at this point, I will turn it over to Christine Corte to make the presentation. And then after Christine's presentation, I imagine that the Chair of the Board will allow the public to ask questions and/or make comments. So go ahead, Christine.
Thank you, Laura. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay. Did you allow me all? Yep, I have the ability to share my screen. So I'll get the presentation queued up. Also want to confirm everyone can see that. Okay. Okay. Thank you guys. Thank you, Chair, Board members, staff and community for having us here. We are excited to present to you today and give you an update on the project and what we've been working on for this design. So a little bit about the goals today. So we are going to provide you a status update on the project and overview of the proposed plan and look to obtain approval from the CRPD Board of Directors for the conceptual design of the renovation of the Alstrom Park Ball Field. So a little bit of a status update. I know Laura gave a brief history. So the city council did approve this Rancho Cordova Little League field renovation as a Community Enhancement Fund Legacy Project. In 2020, the city council did hire LPA for the project design and John Courtney is available today as well to answer questions on the project. Over the last year, we've undergone conceptual and schematic design, including community meetings that Laura summarized and soliciting community feedback on the project. To date, a total of 7.5 million has been approved by the city council for the project. And that funding is spanned over this fiscal year, 21, 22, and next fiscal year, 22, 23. So this project has been a very collaborative approach amongst many stakeholders, including Cordova Recreation and Park District, Rancho Cordova Little League, Folsom Cordova Unified School District and the city of Rancho Cordova. So just to kind of give everyone an update of where we're looking at. So this is the Little League complex. It is split between the CRPD property and the Folsom Cordova, Cordova Lane. This location has been in use since the 1960s. And the existing use has a mixture of major fields, minor fields, farm fields, T-bar, T-ball fields and 150 foot fields. And with the proposed design, we are proposing to keep the existing field count. There'll actually be one less farm field. So basically we are proposing that the same use is is as we are today with the, the proposed project. So we were able to enhance the layout as Laura mentioned by rotating the field and creating this central hub and complex. And on the next slide, I will zoom in more on the CRPD property. But I wanted to give an overview of the general layout of the whole entire complex as it stands today. And we'll be walking through the project, but in general, you walk in through an entry monument. Here is the proposed concession restrooms. This would be a mixture of farm and T-ball fields on Folsom Cordova. This would be a mixture, this would be the minor field, a 200 foot field. This would be a 150 field. And then I know a lot of the community feedback was about shade. So we're looking to add shade trees and entrance of the property and throughout the complex to create a nice gathering area for the public. And then this is the field on CRPD property, which I will be zooming in more on the next slide to go over. Oh, and another benefit we're going to do, there's all the existing storage bins at the entry of the site. We're going to relocate those. We've been working with Folsom Cordova on another location. So when you enter the property, you won't see those existing storage bins that are there today. So this is a zoom in of the CRPD site on Alstrom Park. So the goal of this is to create a state of the art Little League facility. And this proposed orientation creates a very cohesive site that allows for a central hub at this building with all the fields kind of connecting in the center. So I know that the, there's a big goal of maintaining public access to this existing CRPD field. So we're looking to do that through a right field gate and this could also be used for a future maintenance entrance. Also being able to maintain access through an outfield for the left field dugout. So another benefit of this project, as we mentioned, it creates this central gathering area. And one of the goals of Little League is to create a sense of connection that, you know, if you're a parent and you have multiple kids playing, or if you're a younger kid on the farm field, you can look up and see all the older kids playing. So it really kind of creates that sense of community when you're at this complex. So one of the questions when we were working with the CRPD staff on the proposed design was about the park impacts. So to orientate everybody a little bit, the blue field outlined is the existing field and the pink is the proposed field. So the fields are about the same size, 40,000 square feet, where you see the square footage of the existing field change as we just kind of trued up some of the outfield lines. You can see that it was a little bit off. So we just kind of designed it to, based on current standards. So the pink area is where the park area will be into the new field. And the blue area is where the field, the old field will then be back in the park area. So the net impact is about 2,600 square feet and about a six percent, which is about a 6% of the overall field. So a little bit of overview of some of the project elements, we're looking to update as of this project. Putting a new outfield fencing, backstops, bleachers. The concession restroom building will be on the Folsom Cordova side of the property. And then dugout shade structures for the players. That was one of the comments we received. Another comment we received was about pedestrian safety as you enter this complex. So the city received a highway safety improvement grant to improve pedestrian and bike safety on Cordova Lane and Zimvedale Drive. So we will be actually performing this work later this year. However, we made sure the design is cohesive with the Little League project. So some improvements that we're making are going to be 88 cross, uh, crosswalks at all the corners, high visibility pedestrians, striping, creating safe areas for bike, for bicyclists. In addition, adding the high visibility green paint for the bicycle, for the bicyclists as well. And then this will be a large like plaza style ramp going into the facility. So it can, you know, accommodate people going in and out of that complex. And then this slide is just an example of the, so what some of those project elements look like that were done on another project in the community. So another comment we've received was on parking. So we wanted to give a breakdown of the different parking that is in the vicinity, including on Folsom Cordova's property. We've been working with St. Clement's on preparing an MOU as well as there's on-street parking. So the range of parking is around 260 to 290, you know, obviously with parallel parking, some people, you know, you have bigger cars, smaller cars. So we wanted to give a range. The lower limit uses a 24 foot stall. Oh, sorry. And the upper unit uses a smaller stall. So just to give an update on the next action. So we are here before this board to review the conceptual design. If we do receive concurrence on that, we will move forward with design development and construction documents over this calendar year. With the project having improvements on a school property, it will require, that portion of the project will require Division of State Architect Review, which is estimated around five to six months. So submitting that early next year and then doing the bidding and groundbreaking on the project. So with that, I just wanted to leave everyone with my contact information and a link to the city website where we keep update on our, our projects. And with that, I'm happy to receive any questions from the board, members of public staff. And as I mentioned, I have our project architect, John Courtney here as well, if there's any projects, design specific questions.
Thank you, Christine. Clerk Jones, do we have any requests for public comment?
Yes, we do. I'd like to invite Dennis Lamancha to start, please, and you'll have three minutes to comment.
Is he still on? I don't see him.
Mr. Lamancha, you're welcome to start speaking.
Is, is that working?
Yes.
I had to tap to speak. I switched over to my phone. Sorry about that. Anyway. First, I'd like to thank the CRPD for considering this, this request that we we put forward. And I just have some pretty basic comments. Just want to point out how important this change is to us for several reasons. Christine mentioned some of them, the most important of which is the the players, the children being able to basically see their future. You know, they go from one place to another. Any of these complexes really work like that. And that's what makes it so important to remove what we had, what we currently have or what we, you know, yeah, what we currently have, which is our backstop and all of our traffic out on Zinfandel Drive, right there on the, next to the sidewalk and next to the street. So it's very important that we move this inside for various reasons. That's the most important one. Secondarily, we have, you know, a, a higher revenue that we can generate with our snack bar. Everyone's closer to the restrooms and several other, several other benefits that are there. It's a, we're off the street and, and not all the crowds of people roaming around near Zinfandel in the traffic. The children playing with the ball or whatever that might go out into the street. The, most of that should be removed. I just wanted to comment on those things and say how important this is to us as a league that we move forward and we move forward with this type of change. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Dennis. Next.
Thank you. I'd like to now invite Michelle Elkins to speak. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay. And so I just wanted to quickly say just a few things. First of all, I do appreciate all of everybody's work on this. I've been a resident here since 2006 and part of Rancho Cordova Little League since 2012. Both my daughter and son have been members and, and I've been on the board for years now. And I just want to, just a couple of, I have not been part of these meetings. I've just heard of all of the ongoings through our own board meeting, but I just wanted to voice my opinion and, and make some comments. One, I just, like I said, I appreciate all that's being done because our complex is very not worthy of our, our, all of our players out there. There's just with the drugs and the, and the, all of the homelessness and stuff. It's just a, a major issue. And so I am so happy and thankful that we are talking about renovating. I do have a couple of issues and I know at this point it's probably too late, but it's still, nevertheless, I think it's important to share. I just think that, that like Dennis had mentioned, the cohesiveness of our players. I just, because I've been in Little League for so long, I see that other complexes and other communities, as in like Sunrise, they do have all of their fields on one location. And even with this renovation, the area is too small. We were excluding our junior players. So that's just breaks my heart. My daughter was a junior player this last year. And the fact that all the other divisions weren't able to see and be a part, I just, that just is something that I think is a shame. And I just also think that, that this proposal does take away, it is taking away one of our smaller fields. We do have two T-ball and two farm fields at this point in time. By this plan that I did see, we are taking away one of those fields. And just to let you know, right now, we are at like 500 And just to let you know, right now we are at like five hundred enrolled. And so we have three hundred of those being our younger members. So that's going to be, I mean, an issue with scheduling, I guess, on our part. But I guess bottom line is just this area, in my opinion, is very small and that it's excluding the, you know, the cohesiveness of all of our players from four years old to fourteen. And the other biggest thing that I think is heartbreaking is that there are no lights and I don't see any issues of that. I've been involved in the league long enough to know that there's been talk and, and community involvement and asking about lights. But if you go to any other ball field anywhere, you're going to always see lights. It just allows the players to to play nighttime games, Friday night games and the lights and stuff. And I just think that it's a shame that as Rancho Cordova, and I know a lot of it's on park and rec and also school districts, so that is an issue within itself. But it's just, it's just disheartening that it's not going to be still comparable with all this money and effort. And, and we want the best for our youth, that it's still not going to be comparable to that of surrounding areas. So that's pretty much all I had to say. And again, I do appreciate, I don't want to sound like I'm not grateful. I am totally grateful with that we are moving forward. And I think it looks beautiful. I just think that, that as part of Cordova Recreation and Park District, that we could still do more for our baseball players of Rancho Cordova. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any other requests for public comment?
I don't see any other requests.
Okay, Director Sloan, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, actually. I was glad to hear what both representative of the Little League organization had to say. I want to address, I know that they've been, they, they went to bats to change the orientation of the major field. And I guess when I go out there this, for opening day on March, in March, I want to stand where they're proposed the home plate to be. And I was wondering, I mean, I'm going to go back to that spot and, and try to look at what it's going to be like at, at four in the afternoon or five in the afternoon. Whether they've taken into consideration the sun being low and in the umpires eyes, we know how challenged the umpires are on the, in Little League and be able to call the correct strikes and balls. And but the catchers and the batters, it's, it's, it's not easy to hit a ball when you've got players that are backlit by the, the sun. And another question comes to mind would be the, the homerun fence in right field. If you got some hefty, left-handed batters, are they going to be able to knock it into the street? Or is the plan to put a high netted fence in that one area where it might catch the balls or keep it from going into the, into the street or, or where people are actually crossing the street. But that's a possibility to hit them or walking on the sidewalk. Another idea was, I don't know if it's ever, and since you're going to have a state of the art snack bar, whether it's an issue anymore, whether you would invite a food truck or, you know, an ice cream truck or something to come for opening day or some fundraiser, if there would be a place for, for those vehicles to park safely and not obscure any of the, the streets or whatever. And then another one is I, I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't assume, but you, you've canvassed the neighbors that live in that area, especially in the, the, around the major field. Because when you, when you move the, the bleachers down closer to them, it would probably be louder in that area. I don't know how much louder because maybe they're facing the other direction. Maybe the sound carries off into the, towards the church. But that would be a, one thing I want to make sure that you have talked to plenty of the neighbors out there that they've, they've had an opportunity to voice their, their suggestions or opinions about the new configuration. And I think that's all. I'm all for the, the whole idea. As long as that, I like the idea that you've got, you know, the home plates almost back to back to back, you know, so there people can just look at and walk across this way and, and enjoy the, the, the game at, at all the different levels that we offer. Although that one little field is pretty far away, that one little is it, is that a T-ball or a farm field, the one fifty? I'm not sure what that one was. That's pretty far away. Where's my configuration? But I mean, I'm happy with that. I know that Dennis spent a lot of time on this, on this project. And, and I think that he's been heard and that's important to me that I know that the, the entities, the stakeholders have been heard and that the district is, and the school districts is, is all, you know, listening and doing what we can to, to make this a state of the art facility for the kids to grow in the future. And I'm all for it. Thank you.
Can we maybe answer some of the questions Director Sloan had in terms of the netting and placement of the bleachers in the design that you're proposing?
Yeah. How about if I take a shot first and then I'll turn over, turn it over to Christine and she can answer or pass it to John Courtney. Okay. So a couple of questions. We did talk quite a bit about the new position of the outfield fence and whether netting would be needed. And, you know, what we learned from the Little League is that they actually get far more balls that cross over the fence on the foul lines than on the outfield home, you know, indicating a homerun at the, at the outfield. And so we are also planting more trees to make that more dense in that area. And so we're going to see how it goes, but we anticipate there's actually going to be less balls going on to Zimphendel than there currently is. So that's one answer. And then you also asked about the food trucks. I'll have to turn that one over to the other folks, but while I'm still got the floor here. You were asking about whether we had canvassed the neighbors. We have, this is basically the third opportunity for the public to see the project. It is the first time they've seen it rotated. We've tried different strategies to notify the public. The first two meetings, we sent out postcards and Christine can give you more detail on that, but to all the immediate neighbors immediately around. And we had very, very little public participation actually in those first two virtual meetings. This time we took a different tack. We put the sign up on the, on the fence and we put social media, put notices on next door on five different neighborhoods. Notices about this meeting and about the, the Little League field on Allstrom Park. And so we've done our best, but to my knowledge, I don't think anybody's gone door to door to talk about this new rotated field. So with that, I'll turn it over to Christine to add anything that she would like to.
Yes, as Laura mentioned, for the first two community meetings, we did do mailers within all the houses in that neighborhood and within a quarter mile radius. And maybe for regarding the sound issue, I might bring John in on that to see, because he has done a lot of different complexes that has this kind of central hub design to see if that's been a concern. So John, if you wouldn't mind addressing that question.
Sure. Yeah, the from a, from a noise point of view, really the noise is directed in, towards the, towards the street, towards Zimphendel rather than backwards towards the homes. So that's actually a reverse situation of what it's currently there now. Of course, it's, it's, the source point of that noise is farther away. It's closer to Zimphendel. But as you know, direction is a really, that's the key. That's the key generator of noise in a park like this. So it's actually being reduced in the current situation or the current configuration of it. On that one field, the rest of the fields are very close to the way they are right now. They're just renovated in place, if that makes sense. And I think it sounded like the the response on the, the ball exiting the field was, I think, answered pretty well. And I do agree that the, the, the foul ball issue is actually what, what currently is happening is there's more foul balls that are hit that go over the backstop and go into Zimphendel in the current configuration. If it were flipped, it's much more difficult, way, way more difficult for a batter to hit a homerun, especially at the ages that we're talking about, the kids are for the sport. It would be very rare for them to hit it over the homerun fence, to be honest. And even if they did, it's another thirty or forty feet till you get to the sidewalk and to the street. So it's, I think that's, that's going to be minimized by the relocation or the, the reorientation of the field.
And also according to Little League, if there is a homerun, it's closer to center or left field. It's, it's not very common to have a right field homerun when talking to the Little League representatives.
And then I, I think I'll volunteer because I heard Director Sloan ask about food trucks. We've actually widened the the hardscape entering into this zone. And that's in response to a couple of the comments that came earlier in the design process. So there's, it's actually making it more open to that kind of special event use that you're referring to. Because I can see many situations, not just at game times or, or on opening day, but other times during the, during the year when there might be a special event that would be held in the park that you may want to invite food trucks in, you know, to provide, you know, that kind of a festival environment. So I, although I will say, you know, it's part, going to be part of an MOU in terms of the operation of the of the concession stand. And that's, that's still to be discussed, that that's happening at a later date. But you know, generally speaking, you know, the concessions, you know, the, the kind of first right refusal, so to speak, would typically be to the Little League because they're going to be operating concessions that serves the Little League. So it's just one of those considerations as you talk about the MOU. But that said, certainly food trucks for special events, it would be easily accommodated in the current design.
And did anybody address the sun issue?
The sun issue, the, the orientation for this field is is a pretty good orientation. It's the, it's kind of west northwest. It's a pretty good orientation. It's somewhat similar to orientation that the field is in currently. Neither one of them is the best orientation for a field. The problem is that we have a space constraint. The best orientation for a field is north, northeast, right? But we don't have the room because of the existing parking lot to move the major field to that north, northeast orientation. So the reorienting it is probably not going to have the kind of, you know, sun in your eyes kind of effect that you're thinking about. But, you know, I do invite you to go out there on opening day and observe for yourself, you know, stand out there in left field. Right? And, you know, at, at game time and try to envision what, what the sun angle would look like.
Yeah, I planned, and I'm sure Dennis has addressed this, this issue. Because, you know, during the weekday games, they're after school. And so I think the games go until, you know, it's too dark to play. And I think that would be without the, the point where there would be, the, the sun would be at its lowest.
Correct. And there's a good stand of existing, you know, evergreen pine trees that are out there that will be essentially providing shade in the outfield of the new orientation of the field. So even if, even if the sun is at that low angle, a lot of, a lot of it's going to be blocked by the pine trees.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments.
Thank you. Director Danzel?
My only question, and I didn't even have it as a question originally. Director Sloan had asked some of the questions I had. My question is, right now, they currently have that dome out there behind home plate. And John just made the comment that it's more likely to have balls come up over that and go back into the street than it, than it would be to hit a homerun. So my question to you is, now I've put general public behind that and you've already said it's more likely the balls to come do that. What are we doing to protect, protect that general public, those little kids at the, at the snack bar that aren't paying attention? Mom, let's deal with the crying four-year-old and wants to go home. What are we doing to protect those people with those foul balls? Since you said it was more likely, we're going to end up with a foul ball going over a dome back, backstop into the road. What are we doing to protect these people now?
I'll have to turn that one over to Christine or John.
I'll volunteer and answer that question. The current design is to raise the height of the, of the backstop fences. Currently, that dome backstop is undersized for for this, for the Little League function. So the current design is to raise the height considerably for those backstop fences which would eliminate the number of foul balls that are, that are hit back behind the plate.
Okay.
And that, that's true, that's true for all the backstops. So, and, and those are included in the budget. So we're, we've, we've, we've thought about that. And I appreciate the comment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Secretary Yearwood. You need to unmute.
Okay, I only had to hit it four times. But as I was saying that nobody heard, most of my questions have already been asked and answered. So I appreciate that. One question I did have, and I think the picture showed, are the dugouts on that field at Allstrom going to be fencing or cinder block? Are they going to be open? Because the current ones are cinder block. And I'm just wondering if they're going to be open, like.
Right now, it's proposing to be the fencing with shade covering.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I know, I was wondering, because those cinder block ones became an issue many years ago because people could hide in there. They had to lock them up and stuff like that. Will there be gates and that on those dugouts to lock them up when they're not in use? So people can't congregate in there? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And let me look over my notes here. I guess the other question I had, so tonight you're asking us to basically approve this design, is that correct? And then it will go to the school board and the school board gives the thumbs up, then it goes down the permitting, all that design, all that stuff phase, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right.
I have one more question.
Okay. I'm just about done. So I, just, just a general comment. It's, it's, looks really nice. I guarantee, and from all the years you guys have put into this, that and no doubt from the softball fields, I'm sure it'll look just as good as the softball fields over at Mills, if not better. So it's kind of exciting to see this project move forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Director Sloan?
Yeah, I'm going to touch bases on, on both. I think it was the Director Danzel's. Was it Secretary Danzel? I forget who it is. Who's secretary now? Michael? Anyway, about the foul balls. Now we've got three fields that have potential foul balls into an area where there are people and especially people eating. I'm, I'm assuming and waiting in line at the concession stand, I'm assuming that there will be some type of covering or protection for balls dropping in where people are, are congregating and, and eating, having picnics and in groups and waiting in lines. Or is there an over? You know, and, and some type of an overhang at that, at the snack bar that would protect them from being hit? Because the balls will go up and down, straight down in those areas.
John, do you want to address that?
Yeah, the, we do have an awning. Yeah, the, we do have an awning that would be attached to the, the concession stand. It's for two purposes. It's for the purpose that you just mentioned. But it's also to provide shade because that building will have a southern exposure. And you really don't want to have direct sunlight on the serving window on a concession stand that faces south. So it'll have a extended covering over it. There will also be plaza trees and, and, in that area both for, you know, for the cooling comfort of, you know, shading the pavement and the tables. But also, again, to give that overhead protection. But again, as I said, you know, raising raising the heights of the backstop is the number one way to reduce the number of balls that are hit, you know, out of, out of play. And, you know, one of the reasons to, to not do a domed backstop is because you, and Dennis will agree with this. You know, whenever the ball is popped up into the air and it hits the backstop, it puts it out of play. And so it takes something away from the game. You really, you know, if there's a pop-up and, and it's playable, you want, you want the catcher to be able to catch the ball because that's part of the game, is learning how to do that. And so by, by removing the dome and raising the height of the fences, you, you accomplish two things. You improve the, the level of play and the experience of the players. And you, you prevent more foul balls from actually going up and over and back into those areas that you're talking about. So there's a number of, of design elements that we have included in the concepts to minimize that.
And also just to touch upon what John said is, we're also looking at where we're placing the tables and not, you know, trying to put those in places that are more behind home plate or areas that are not as high of foul ball exposure or thinking about where people are queuing in the areas. So we have looked at that with John as we're placing tables and where people are queuing, you know, trying to minimize that exposure.
Another question comes to mind, that area on field number nine, I guess it is. That, that sort of tan area, we, I believe is a play structure area. There's like a little place for kid slides and the climbing structure for kids to play on that don't care about watching their big brother play. They, you know, softball or baseball, I mean, baseball. Is that still going to be available? Is that going to be there? Or is it going to be taken apart?
I believe the school district has taken down that play structure, right, John?
It's not there anymore? So I know, I just noticed a lot of complexes that do have an area where some of the parents can take their three-year-olds or four-year-olds.
Yeah, we've definitely thought about. We're working with the school district on terms of what that surface might be, but we, I think right now it's grass. And maybe keeping that, maybe keeping that grass or some type of area, like you said, for other kids that are there wanting to, you know, throw a baseball or kick a soccer ball around type thing. So, yeah, so we are working with the school district in terms of what type of treatment that should be or can be.
Thanks.
Hey, I don't have any additional questions or comments, so I would like to call for a motion on this item.
All right. I'll leave the board of directors to approve the conceptual plans for the renovation of Allstrom Park Ball Field, associated with the Ranch Cordova Little League renovation project.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion by Secretary Yearwood and a second by Director Sloan. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Your linebacker?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes is absent.
Play ball.
Okay, so now we will move on to item H, Board of Directors items.
Thank you. Item H1 is Board Member Reports. There was no training in the last period, so we'll move on to Community Activities and Meetings Report.
Okay, so Director Sloan?
Okay, so I guess I reporting on the public hearing number two by district election. I mean, I think they're going well. I think we're learning more and more the importance of going in this direction, what it means to the future of the district. On the 25th of January, I attended the Breka Steering Committee meeting via Zoom. And I basically offered some information about their park, which is the foundations for the new monument sign is, is been poured and is ready for the district to deliver that soon. I don't know when that is. I didn't give them any dates. But, and also I, I, I informed them how the district came and re-refurbished and reconditioned the, the out there that, there was the irrigation system that was leaking, was causing a puddle in the the northwest corner of the park has been addressed. And then I also mentioned how in the future, we don't know when, but eventually the, the, the tennis courts will be refurbished with this new inlay of new particle stuff, whatever it is that will rejuvenate the play of tennis and with some lines painted in for pickleball for the future, which I think is fantastic. I can't wait for that because I really want to get out there more and play pickleball. I, I really think that's the wave of the future. Actually, it's a wave of the, right now, it's not even the future, it's happening. On on, let's see. February 1st, I attended the Ranch Cordova Athletic Association meeting, and they basically went over the, the next, the new list of priorities of what the the different leagues need, proof for proposals from the the Community Enhancement Grant Measure, I think it's Measure H and Measure R in the city of Ranch Cordova. They are, I think they have until March 18th to get their, their paperwork. And I believe this, I think we've already, the city, our district has already has put in some paperwork for, for some help on that. These, the Ranch Cordova Sports Hall of Fame is going to be September 10th. It's a Saturday. I don't know if you guys will be able to make it. I don't even know if I'll be able to make it. I might be out of town, but we'll see. Basically, we went over the, the goals of the organization and to, and went over some of the projects that have already been done, but the biggest thing is those getting the grants, getting the proposed grant applications in on time. And I believe that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sloan. Director Danzel?
Um, mine's real quick, simple. It was the public hearing number two. Once, once again, we got more information out there, gave the chance, gave the public their, their opportunity. I'm glad to see public showed up tonight. On that, obviously, I'd like to hear some more from the public. I'm glad we were able to make the changes, but other than that, I'm good.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Secretary Yearwood?
Yeah, the, the public hearing on January, what was it, the 24th? It was nice to have Angel, have somebody out there talking about it, and I was very happy to see that she did make contact with them and, and put a map together. Rather quickly, it put a map together, so. But, and again, I'll agree with the Director Danzel. It was nice to see more people tonight. Putting input, even if it was just one more person, but Angel adding more comments. So I hopefully by the next one there'll be more public input on that. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. And I also attended that public hearing number two on January 24th, and I think we're getting a lot of good information, and I don't really have anything additional to offer beyond what's already been said. So and I have no other meetings to report. So we move on to well, item H2 is Board Officers' Appointments and Elections, of which there are none. So we'll move on to item I, Comments by Staff on Non-Agenda Items.
Thank you. Item I1 is the Districtwide Monthly Progress Report for February, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Good evening, everyone, or good night, everyone, maybe soon. Just a couple of updates from this past month. We have been meeting as a management team to implement COVID 19 prevention strategies. As you all know, we are in a remote situation, mostly hybrid. We're looking to come out of that next week and have folks return to the office. Unfortunately, this round of COVID, and I look at it as round three or four at this point. This one was not the, the best one in terms of our caseloads. So we accommodated that by moving back into a remote type of work setting, which seemed to have slowed, if not eliminated, the caseload. So I'm, I'm happy to report that. We have at this point our Cordova Recreation and Parks Foundation. Our new staff liaison is going to be Becky Hers, our Recreation Superintendent. So as she is trained and transitioned into that role, she also did a great job on getting us ready for the 2022 Big Day of Giving campaign, which we'll also be participating this year in. In addition to that, they had a great month. The foundation applied for a grant for COVID relief, meaning that they applied for funding relief for their inability to do the polar bear plunge. And they received a $5,000 grant from the city of Ranch Cordova for their COVID relief funds for nonprofit organizations. So that was a great great accomplishment for them. What a great way to start off the new year. So kudos to them. We have our CAPRCBM Awards Banquet. We are going to be honored this year with an award for the 2021 Outstanding Project Award. And that stands for, just so everyone is reminded, the California Parks and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. So that's what that means. So we're excited to be accepting that award. And then there will be, I'm assuming, down the road, some more announcements in future meetings for additional awards for our amazing pool project that we were able to accomplish last year. This 2022 CARPD Annual Conference, so there are a lot of CC, all that good stuff. You guys have been notified that we are currently taking registration for that. So if you are still interested in registering, please contact Danielle, and she will get you all set for that conference coming up. We have our first PMR ID Oversight Committee scheduled for February 23rd. And that committee will be, this is their first opportunity this year to get updated on our accomplishments from last year, and then look to talk about where we are financially and all that good stuff. With the new CIP Committee that we have with two board members, we're planning on bringing that information to that board first, and then from that meeting, we will bring forward any relative PMR ID projects that relate to them for next year after that meeting. The overall expenses are under budget by 11% in comparison to 11% last month, and no changes will be, the overall budget is on target at this point. The Village Green added necessary fencing barriers to protect the backstage area of the amphitheater at that park, which we're excited for. That will hopefully prevent some potential safety issues that we've been having out there and deter that. So that's a great improvement we've made. And then also, great news. We received our January tax payments that had prior positive general fund balance, therefore bypassing the need for us to borrow during our dry period financing. Overall revenues received is 2% above projected at this point. So now we're on a roll. We are a year or two with being in that position, which I'm grateful and thankful for our strategic budgeting and making sure that we are keeping in check our expenses and, you know, activating responsibility fiscally. So I'm, I'm very proud of us for getting there. Matt, fantastic. Let's keep this dream alive. So we have several development projects in queue. Laura, 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 it's been just quite the adventure. She's managing it. We are activating at all cylinders, all of our park finding and development staff. There are different phases to which we are in development. Some are in review, some are in design phases and construction projects. So that list of, the long list of projects are in your board packet for you to see how accelerated that area of our district is going. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns, for that report.
Thanks, Patrick. Good evening. I'm going to start out with some really exciting news to share that's not in your board packet tonight. I'm proud to announce that we have two winners of the Cordova Community Council's 2022 Community Volunteer Awards, which is amazing. So the Cordova Community Council every year has a volunteer appreciation banquet. Two of our actual aquatics volunteers received the award this year. For the Outstanding Service to Youth was Carol, is Carol Kraus. She's with the Cordova Blue Marlins. I think many of you know who she is. She is a very dedicated individual to that Blue Marlins organization. She's amazing. So we're super excited for Carol and her nomination and her victory to be the next Outstanding Service to Youth Award winner. And then we also have another award winner. Her name is Cheryl Meyer, and she and her husband got an award for Hidden Gems, which is awesome. Now Cheryl has worked with us what we think is from the beginning of when the Cordova Community Pool was open and is currently, she's been a lifeguard, and she's done lots of things with us. And now currently, she's also one of our swim instructors. So super excited for those two individuals to win. If you are interested in attending the banquet, it is going to be on March 11th here at City Hall. I will have Danielle tomorrow send you out the information via email, so you can go on to the Cordova Community Council's website, and you can register, and it's $30 per ticket. So if you're interested, would love for you to go. We've got some staff members going to also celebrate both Carol and Cheryl. But that's some exciting news. I'm proud of, of the staff. I'm proud of the aquatics program that we have, and it's just awesome. So congratulations to all the winners for that. The other information I'd like to share this evening is from the Parks Department over at the Mather Sports Complex. We replaced two of three HVAC systems that are above the racquetball courts. They were about 30 years old and were no longer operating, so appreciate the staff for getting those operational as the summer is upon us here pretty shortly. And then over at Lincoln Village Community Park, I know manager Laura Taylor has, you know, talked about this in the past, but we do have some new bike racks that were installed, and we included some fixtures there, so you could see the new bike racks over at Lincoln Village Community Park. And we can thank FISA for helping us get those bike racks over there at the park. And then the last thing at the Cordova Golf Course, we are still waiting to hear when construction will start on the new golf course driving range netting. We do, you know, know that they, Judge Netting, who is the project coordinator, have been working with Sack County on permits. We know how long sometimes that can take, but the structural calculations and drawings have been submitted. And now they're just waiting to hear if they have been approved or not. And once we hear if they're, they're approved, then hopefully the construction can start from there. For board special invitations, Matt Goodell's favorite holiday is coming up, which is St. Patrick's Day. So if you want to celebrate it over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, they are having a luncheon on Wednesday, March 16th at 11:30 a.m. And then hopping and hunting's back, woo-hoo! So at Hagan Community Park, Saturday, April 9th, from 8:30 to 11:30. And again, the board is always invited to all of our events. And with that, that concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Okay, and so I guess our last Okay, um, and so I guess our last item is J two, the CRPD Board and Administration Calendar.
Yes.
If there is nothing else, I would like to adjourn this meeting at nine oh one PM to our next regular board meeting, Wednesday, March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six-thirty PM, and maybe in person.
Let's hope.
We shall see.
Thank you all.
Good night, all.
Good night.